Call the meeting on order, the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. Bennett?
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Bennett.
Commissioner Harris?
Bennett.
Chair Dunn?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We administer everything. Okay, we'll continue with the meeting. The first one is Derek, do you have any?
No, sir.
Of the comment today. Citizens desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Bennett?
James Wallace?
Morning. James Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road. I'm here today to discuss the request to spend $28,850 of taxpayer dollars to purchase a used 2019 Dodge Durango for the EMS department. I was wondering if there's any standards that the county has when it comes time to replace a vehicle? Do they have to prove a need or what? Do they have to get estimates from more than one vendor or just one estimate? Or any estimates? Does a mechanic have to give a recommendation? The notice says on December 16th, 2021, it was discovered that one of the support vehicles needed a new engine. I was wondering who made the determination that it needed a new engine? Was it just one person? Was it a mechanic that made this determination? Did more than one mechanic make this determination? The vehicle in question is a 2011 Ford Expedition. According to Kelly Boo Book, this vehicle has an average value of $3,215. I would like to know how many miles around the 2011 Ford Expedition. A verbal quote to replace the engine was approximately 7,500. Is there a warranty on the replacement engine? If so, what is it? Given the value of the vehicle and the cost to replace the engine, it would be a better use of funds to replace the vehicle. Again, who made this determination? After waiting almost three months, I have received a quote from the Kansas Highway Patrol for a used Dodge Durango. Is there a warranty on the used Dodge Durango? If so, what is it? All lights and sirens are included in the cost of the vehicle. The mileage the ticket show, $27,250 for the base plus $1,600 additional cost for the lights and sirens and a new bumper. The request continues and the mileage is less than 50,000. True, but just barely, 49,122 miles. For reference, I was able to locate a new 2021 Chevy Tahoe. Doesn't say how many miles, I don't think. That would need customization. The cost of this vehicle totals $54,642.2. So the 2021 Tahoe costs 54,640.2 versus 28,850 for the Dodge Durango. That still needs over 27 something, still needs $1,600 worth of lights and sirens and a new bumper. Or is it 28,500 for the Dodge Durango versus 7,500 for the Ford Expedition since the Ford Expedition already has all the lights and sirens? And if the 2011 Ford Expedition is a support vehicle, do it really need lights and sirens? How many sets of lights and sirens do you need on the scene? Is there a warranty on the Dodge Durango? If it is a former Highway Patrol vehicle, why does EMS feel the need to put more lights, sirens, and a new bumper on it? In closing, just because you have the money in the bank doesn't mean you have to spend it. Please spend taxpayer dollars wisely.
Hey Jim, I might say something about that. If you want to talk about an item on the agenda, you need to put that on your public comment and bring it up as we talk about that on our agenda.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Norman Woogie?
Norman Woogie, 37 Mattie Pine Road. I look a story in last Sunday's sermon at church. The story was told to make a point of getting a job done. Abraham Lincoln was quoted as if a person had an hour to chop down a tree, he needs 45 minutes to sharpen his axe. That quote is the theme of this presentation today. Firstly, I don't need to sharpen an axe. The axe should be kept sharp. Evidently, you all don't understand the motive of my presentations. No one has communicated with me explaining how my concerns could be resolved. Or you guys don't respect us, don't want to be bothered, or just don't flat care. Back to the axe quote, I don't want to cut down the tree. My motive is to prune, shape, remove dead branches, therefore to improve the county commissioners' image and be fruitful. Improvements can be made, especially with your communication policies. Please don't violate my constitutional right to speak. My understanding that a few of you are eligible to be re-elected. Most people don't have the luxury of visiting these county commissions' meetings. Some of you have never viewed the commission action from this viewpoint. There are three openings for commissioners for each of the districts to be filled. I think that June 1st is the deadline to file. Talk to the county clerk for details. The commission leaving probably won't get a year's severance pay as your buddy. In my many years of being connected with the local governor, body, in the first three years of being involved, a person lost their job. A group of citizens uncovered evidence, mostly theft. And one resigned and another was abuse of a credit on credit cards. One for theft of chainsaws. One person was guilty of building the county for entertainment and liquor at a questionable club. When confirmed, he says, "I didn't know there was a limit to what we could spend." He chose not to run again for that job. Evidence was presented at the commission, not public, to not embarrass him. And the credit cards used for private vehicles were charged on the county credit cards. There are infractions that show up on the pay vouchers. If this commission really cares, a forum needs to meet in these chambers to closely scrutinize each of the pay vouchers before they go to the final deed. Only number another subject, I travel to Kansas City on I-35 quite often. I question, how come Franklin County can't attract a few of those businesses to the South Park? I know you have authorized many millions of dollars, probably borrowed money. If I had any say, each week, a detailed report, day by day, on the progress for you guys to examine. It's been 22 years plus for that person. He has acquired a number of people he strokes online. It's been years, nothing done. Find someone that can get the job done. Johnson County has approved proven track records. Why not Franklin County? The time is now.
The agenda, we've got consider and approve claim vouchers in the amount of $215,180.47. Tax change orders of minus $11,184.08. And consider an approval payroll for the pay period of January 1, 2022 to February And the minutes of the meeting for February 23rd.
Motion, Mr. President?
Okay.
Bennett, your roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Here we got items of business now, Kenny. You're up for public, no, wait a minute. Consider holding a public hearing on March 2nd to consider vacating 2650 to 2800 Utah Road from the north right of way of the Kingman Terrace north to a point 25 feet south of the Steel Trust Bridge described in Franklin County Resolution Number 12-15 West. David?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a, we received a request from some landowners down in the bottoms area there on a minimum maintenance road. They would like to close that section of road. Back in 2012, the county closed another section of this road further to the north. And this ties on to the end of that road vacation and comes down to Kingman, to the north line of Kingman Terrace. And much like all of the other road vacations that we've done, at least in my time, the reason is it's a minimum maintenance road. The farmers use it to access their land during harvest season and planting season and whatnot. But there are folks that come down there unauthorized and tend to tear up the roads and get into the fields and that sort of thing. And so the landowners came together. They would like to close this section of road. And we need to consider opening a public hearing to consider that road vacation. I will say that this notice of this meeting was advertised in the newspaper and we haven't received any calls or comments from anyone from the public, one way or the other, about this project, about this road closure. And so I think that it will be fine. We do have Mr. Curtis here, who is one of the landowners that would be probably happy to answer any questions that may come up. But the first order of business is entering into a public hearing.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to open the meeting to a public hearing. So move.
Okay. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a public hearing on this matter. Curtis, would you like to say anything?
Hello, Ryan Curtis, 2551 Stafford Road. Picked up this property down in Peoria Bottoms. Noticed that we do have traffic coming in and out from time to time, even though there's gates on both sides of the road, one on the Peoria side and one over there by Marshall and Utah. So that was one thing we're trying to eliminate too. And then the other problem is most of the road that we're trying to vacate here does join two fields that I own. And I have a lot of watershed issues due to the road rising up higher than the sides of the fields. And so that was another drive to try and get this done so that I can fix some of those issues.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else have any comments about?
I have a question, and this is not about this property necessarily, but just, and not for you maybe, but for David. So we vacated a road down the, down maybe 30 years down there, somebody decides, "I want to build," or "I want to sell a piece to build on this." We never take that road back over, do we?
They always, there is always the option for the county to open a road. It would require the landowners to dedicate the right of way or grant a right of way easement. And then we would also require them to build the road to county standards. So there is that option. This particular location and really the locations that, of the minimum maintenance roads that we have closed in the last few years, I don't really believe that any of those roads will, are ripe for development. In every single case, the landowners in the area are unified in their approach to these road vacations and ends up being a better situation for the citizens and certainly for the county as well. And it also, in so far in all of the situations, it hasn't hindered traffic flows. Those minimum maintenance roads are, you know, the ones that we vacated haven't, aren't used for regular access. It's really primarily used just for the farmers and ranchers to utilize, get to their property and their fields. But so often, we have folks that really have no business being in those locations and they, they cause everybody extra work and expense by the damage that's done.
I was saying, in my 20 years, I don't remember any of them, anybody ever come back in to request a reopening. I have, remember one instance, it was a minimum maintenance and the people paid for getting the upgrade to the road back to where they wanted to build, so they could build. But that's still only two instances, I can really even remember. Sorry.
No, that's fine, Roy. We might close down the public hearing before we ask anymore.
Take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll discuss.
I just kind of mentioned the past history. I mean, maybe there is that I don't remember, but I can only remember one. And that was not even a closed road, that was just a minimum maintenance. Once they've been closed, I don't remember anybody ever coming back in 20 years asking for one to be reopened. But, I mean, I'm not saying they won't, because it's always the first time, but I don't remember it ever happening.
And it actually saves the county money, because don't we do something to the minimum?
Yeah, we typically on minimum maintenance roads, we don't touch those unless we get a call from one of the landowners that need access. They'll go back and see that it's either been torn up by people playing around on it, or maybe some drainage issues or those sorts of things after a big storm and they need it straightened up. And so we will go in and grade it so that they can get in and out of their fields safely and easily without tearing up their equipment. But they're minimum maintenance for a reason. Usually they're in floodplain areas where it's virtually impossible for us to maintain good drainage, to keep those roads in good condition. Sometimes they're in very, very low traffic areas and so there's no need for the road, those sorts of things. So yes, it does eliminate a little bit of work for us from time to time.
Thank you, David. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion to close 2600 Utah Road, or 2650 to 2800 Utah Road. So move.
Thank you.
Bennett?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave, the next one's yours too.
The next agenda item, Commissioners, is very similar to this one. We were approached by landowners up on Alabama Road. It's right on the county line, so that makes it a little bit unusual in that half of the right of way is in Franklin County, half of the right of way is in Osage County. Those landowners would like to close a portion of Alabama Road, beginning about 540 feet, 44 feet north of Thomas Road, because there's a small residence that has frontage on that Alabama Road, so we don't want to eliminate their access to Alabama. And then from that road north to just about a quarter mile south of Woodson Road, that section of road is bordered on each side by, there's one landowner in Franklin County and one in Osage County, and they would like to gate that off to prevent folks from accessing that area to, again, that don't have any real business being there. And so this road is not a cut through for any of the residents or the people in that area. They've got good roads north and south and east and west of there. So it is our recommendation that we move forward. And so we have the letters from the adjoining landowners. We sent, or we will send certified letters to everybody in the area that touches that road. And so they'll have an opportunity to voice their concerns and that sort of thing. We will also publish in the newspaper a couple of times next week as a part of this process. We can only control what's in Franklin County. I have made it clear with the folks requesting that they will have to work through Osage County to close their portion. And if you noticed, the letter sent to us is addressed to both Franklin and Osage County. And so I'm guessing that those letters went out to Osage as well. So we would like to, if you approve, we would like to hold a public hearing, much like we just finished up, here in a couple of weeks on March 16th.
At this time, we'll take a motion to open a public hearing to vacate 2720 to, or 4850 Alabama Road. All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
We're not doing it today.
Yeah, we just need you to, the motion today is for you to approve holding a meeting on the 18th, or on the 16th, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve a public hearing, hold by, about this matter.
On the 16th.
I motion to approve holding a public hearing on March 16th, 2022 to consider vacating Alabama Road from a point 544 feet north of the southwest corner of the southwest quarter of Section 23, track 15 south range, pit 17 east to the northwest corner of the southwest quarter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as written in the minutes, or in the agenda.
There we go.
So a motion, get a motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Anybody like to speak about on this matter?
We just made the motion to actually have the hearing on the 16th.
On the 16th?
On the 16th. That's what the motion is for, to have the hearing on the 16th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that right, David, 16th of March?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to hold a public hearing on March 16th.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes, just trying to get ahead of the curve here. Next time, it's a guess, approval purchase of a used 2019 Dodge Durango. Christie, you'd like to talk about this?
Good morning. So you're already aware of my request. And just some background with the vehicle, in December of last year, the check engine light did come on on the vehicle. It was taken out to Dodge at the time because they were doing our service and repair. They said they were not able to diagnose it and sent us to Ford. Ford found that the engine was bad in the vehicle and said it needed to be replaced. Looking at what they were telling me, it would be a used engine that they would have to put in there for about $7,500. The vehicle is obviously worth less than that. Pulling old replacement schedules, this vehicle was originally scheduled to be replaced in 2018 to the tune of $40,000. So decisions were made to start looking at a new support vehicle. When I started looking, right now with the dynamic of COVID, vehicles are incredibly hard to find. So I went through Mid-America Regional Council to see if they could help me locate a vehicle. One was, they said that they contracted with Shawnee Mission Ford. Shawnee Mission Ford had about a two-year backlog. After that, started looking into other specialty services. I know we had gone through superior emergency response vehicles in the past to purchase vehicles. They had nothing available, but said they could put me on a waitlist. I haven't heard from them. Did contact the Kansas Highway Patrol because they have emergency vehicles as well. They put me on a waitlist, said that it would probably be May or June. However, I did get a phone call from them last week that they had a vehicle available. In the midst of continuing to keep trying, as you can see, I was able to find a new one from TCS Upfitting, and it was $54,640. Felt like that was quite a pricey sum to pay for a support vehicle. So quote from Kansas Highway Patrol's $20,850, and that would be my recommendation on purchasing of the support vehicle. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Christie, who was it that gave you the quote on the used engine?
It was just a verbal one with Ford, and they said it was just an approximate amount of money.
With Ford, you're talking the Ford dealership?
That is correct, with the Ford dealership.
And this is a Ford Expedition that needs a new engine?
That is correct.
So presumably, the Ford dealership knows a thing or two about Ford engines?
Yes.
How many miles do you have?
Approximately about 140,000 miles. The vehicles don't get just a whole lot of mileage. However, they are expected to respond to emergency calls. So we do take them and run lights and sirens with them to respond to emergency calls when warranted. So that would be why we would continue to need lights and sirens in the vehicle.
And this would be a $7,500-ish dollar engine that you would be putting into a 12-year-old vehicle that's worth roughly $3,000 as it sits today?
That is correct.
And so our realistic options are brand-new vehicle for 50-some thousand, or used vehicle that we will almost assuredly get at least a decade's worth of use out of for half of that. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
The quote from the Kansas Highway Patrol? The, the quote from the Kansas Highway Patrol for $28,850, it, it has what I would call an itemization.
It does have an item, correct.
Lights and, but those lights, that bumper, is included in that $28,850 cost.
Yes, it is.
Which is what you say on your cover sheet.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Actually, I, I do very much appreciate the fact that you need a new vehicle, and you don't just say, well, I'm gonna go get a new vehicle. And you realize in this, in this market that, that, yeah.
Right.
And I, I do appreciate that you're saving the taxpayers over $20,000 by looking at other options.
Thank you.
You know, I, one of the things that, and it's not just Christie, David Lee does a fantastic job of this, too. Like, we have a replacement schedule, but every single time we have a vehicle that is due to be replaced, we scrutinize. Does it actually have to be replaced? And oftentimes, these vehicles are in good operating conditions, so we continue to use them.
Correct.
This was due to be replaced in 2018.
That is correct, and it was still very, it was a very good, very well-operating vehicle. So at the time, it was, it looked like it was moved off of the original replacement schedule, so.
So we've got four more years of life out of this vehicle.
That is correct.
And, and, and you routinely do that. David has done that with countless vehicles, the, the purpose of which is to save taxpayer dollars and to make fiscally responsible decisions.
Yes.
I'm proud of your ability to do that, Christie, as I am with David's ability.
Thank you.
I would wholeheartedly recommend this quote from Kansas Highway Patrol.
What would be the value if you did replace the motor on this 2011 Ford Expedition?
Well, just looking online at Kelley Blue Book value, it's about, I do have it on the cover sheet, if you can give me just a second.
I would think it'd be a lot more than 3,000 if you replaced the motor.
So the vehicle is not in the, it's made with an aluminum alloy, so the paint is significantly coming off in the back of the vehi, or the back of the tailgate's starting to bubble up. So it does have some, some structural issues with it as well.
Problems, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, or Christie, about this?
Yeah, just the only comment I'd make is, is nothing new. We, we did this several times in the past. Are we gonna get a bad one someday? Yeah, it just stands to reason, but we haven't yet. Every one of them, we've got from them so far has worked out and got a lot of years under warranty management. And a couple others have had, we've bought state vehicles like this. And I know several of the cities and sheriff's departments and, and all over do the same, do the same thing. So we're not doing something odd. We're just trying to do something that, you know, will get us back on the road with a minimal amount of cost, so.
Correct. I also know that with the Highway Patrol vehicles, they have a, a very stringent maintenance policy on their vehicles as well.
What will you do with the old vehicle on this?
That's a good question. So I'm, I'm thinking probably Purple Wave.
Okay. Any other questions, Christie, about this? Or a motion would read, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2019 Dodge Durango amount of $28,850. Go move.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yes.
Okay, we're, thank you, Christie. Any other, while you're up there, Christie, do you have anything on your department? Any other information or anything?
I, I think we're gonna talk some more about that on Monday, so.
Got a study session on Monday, and I think Christie's gonna have some, have an item for us, so.
I just didn't want to skip you, want to go through the.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Staff reports?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Got a meeting later this morning to discuss an exciting project, a potential project in Wellsville. I'm excited about the county's partnership opportunities with Wellsville. You know, we've talked about that before, and this morning, I'm gonna, gonna have a meeting, and hopefully that will culminate in something that is gonna be in front of the, the board here before too long. Yesterday, I've had a couple of great meetings, had a leadership team meeting, and so my leadership team, being all of my department heads and then the five elected officials, fantastic meeting. We haven't gotten together much over the last couple of years due to the pandemic. Got together yesterday and really, really like that group. Feel like the, the group that is managing the county is, is stronger than it's ever been. I think it is more cohesive than it's ever been. And, and I think the thing that, that I appreciate the most is we're seeing depth be developed through multiple departments. I mean, you've got the undersheriff here who's fantastic. You know, our road and bridge superintendent, Jeff Welton, is fantastic. Christie's made fantastic hires. And so really excited for what the future holds there. And, and that's my lead into Friday is National Employee Appreciation Day. And so we've got, you know, we've got some things planned. They're not huge things, but, but certainly appreciate our employees. And, and, you know, we talk a lot about our first responders, and for good reason. I, you know, I say all the time, I, I could not do their job. And I don't think that enough people really think about what it is that, that our law enforcement and our ambulance personnel, what they actually have to do, and the psychological toll that that could take on them. And we talk about a lot about our public works operator, which, for good reason. You know, the, the weather events that they have to work 24/7 through. There are also employees that, that we don't talk as much about, I think, about our dispatchers, and, and how important is that job? I mean, they are literally the connection between the people and the first responders. You know, our custodians and maintenance staff who keep our work areas clean. Like, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like we talk about our people enough, and certainly want all of our employees to know. I mean, as of today, we have 230 positions in this county. Not all of them are full, but appreciate every single person who works for us, appreciate the five of you. We all have thankless jobs, and, and we do it because we want to help. We want to help the people that we serve, and I know that is why the five of you do this, and just certainly appreciate you as well. But, so Friday is Employee Appreciation Day. If you see, happen to run into any county employees, you might let them know that you appreciate them. And that's, that's all I have, so. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Derek.
Have we pinpointed a date yet for when we're gonna have our two-day session?
10th and 11th. The 10th and 11th.
10th and 11th?
Yeah, so that would be next Thursday and Friday is what we're shooting for.
Okay.
Pencil it in. I know Janet's working.
We have the room booked.
We have room.
10th and 11th, same plate.
And, and we'll, we'll, I mean, we obviously notice it up like a normal meeting. It is a normal meeting, and we'll send you guys the details as well, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Derek. Appreciate those comments about our employees. It's, Sheriff, the undersheriff, either one?
Good morning. I'm surprised that the administrator didn't say this, but I will go ahead and comment. Monday evening, I spent that evening down at Central Heights helping cheer on the Vikings to their sub-state victory over the London Tigers. So wanted to, yeah, wanted to acknowledge your alma mater there, so. And as far as, Christie had talked about some vehicles, I guess the reason she couldn't get them from service is because we got their, we bought the last of their vehicles there, which are, and we got the 2021 models. We did that because we could get those 2021s a lot quicker, and again, at a cost savings to, to the county. So it, it's, the problem out there with, with vehicles, it, I mean, it's a real thing, and so we're, everybody's kind of jumping through whatever hoops we can so that we can get those, get those things done. And I also wanted to acknowledge, Derek mentioned, that the, that our undersheriff is here. Kyle was this, this is last week, I believe, was accepted to the Department Homeland Security Leadership Academy, and he will be attending that down in Glencoe, Georgia in September. He'll be going to Session 14. I attended Session 10 a couple of years ago. I walked away with it with COVID. Hopefully he won't do that. But it, it is a good class, and in, in our profession, leadership training and those classes, it takes on a little different spin than it might in other sectors. And so this is a way that we're able to provide that high-level leadership training with, with a focus in what happens in our culture. And so I'm excited that he's gonna be able to attend that. He and I both attended the Homeland Security Leadership Academy for small rural and tribal agencies and last summer, and so he's got a little bit of a taste of, of that as well. But we're, we're proud of him and what, what his accomplishments he's been able to receive, to obtain so far, and look forward to the future. With that, if, I will stand for any questions that you all may have for me.
And I would chime in. I neglected to mention this. We, we talk about public works fleet, we talk about the ambulance fleet. The sheriff's got a big fleet, too, and, and, and he does an outstanding job as well, him and his team. I mean, we're, it is incredibly hard to acquire vehicles right now. And certainly, there was a time when, you know, it, it wasn't. And, you know, we could get state contract pricing just anywhere. We had options. Whereas now, we're, you know, but, but Jeff is the same. I mean, makes fiscally sound decisions, and, yeah, he's not looking to replace his fleet earlier with brand-new vehicles all the time. So want to commend you guys for that, too.
And it's not just the cost of vehicles, it's how long it takes to get them. I know the city's looking at a fire truck. Two years, maybe, maybe, out, you know? And so you gotta consider that, too. If you need a tr, a car, you need a car.
And a difficult thing that the public may not always understand as well is the way our budget cycles work. You budget it so far in advance for that following year, and you, with our market, you don't know what's gonna happen with the cost of those as well. So that's why having that replacement schedule and those things is, is very critical to county operations. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Congratulations, Kyle, for being accepted, I guess, to the academy.
Kyle, you want to come up and say a few words?
I'll, I'll say my comments right after, please.
Fair enough. Kenny, do you have anything for us today? Casey?
I just have a little bit of exciting news. Thursday, the Health Department administered a zero COVID test and got zero COVID phone calls. So that's the first time since March 2020 that they haven't done a single test on business day or gotten any phone calls. So that's pretty exciting. What's that?
Take a day off.
That's right. And then I, I know we're at, as of yesterday, we're at a 9% positivity rate. Dr. Ranson wants to see that go down just a little bit more, but we're definitely well on our way. And we had zero active cases in the hospital also as of yesterday. So all good news. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah.
Justin, do you have anything anymore? Okay. David, do you want to talk a little bit?
Yeah, so last week, we had a little bit of another weather event, so we, we treated roads Wednesday and Thursday. Due to the, the temperatures and whatnot, we're able to burn a bunch of brush, brush piles that we had around the county while that was still safe to do so. This week, we began clearing trees and brush along the right of way at Thomas and Nebraska Terrace up north. We've got another day or so on that project to get it squared away. We've unloaded our spreaders and snowplows so that we can use our end dumps to haul rock again. Hopefully, we haven't done that too quickly. Hopefully, the weather that's planned for us is more on the rain side than anything else, but we'll, we'll load them back up if, if we need to. We've also got a number of ditching projects and additional tree and brush removals coming up that'll, that'll occupy our time. One interesting project that we've started, in fact, they're probably out on the roads today. We are going to, a few years ago, I bought GoPro cameras to document some of the flood damage. We're gonna use those, the video component of those cameras, and we're going to inventory all of our roads in the county, all the gravel roads and all the asphalt roads. And we'll do this on a yearly basis. What that data will be used for is, again, FEMA wants to know that we're doing road main, road maintenance and those sorts of things. They keep talking about if we don't have that kind of data going forward, they're not gonna reimburse us. So moving forward, we will have this information. We'll have it year after year, so we'll be able to monitor the conditions of our road. We'll have that indexed. And then for our pavement, we have this pavement management system. It will also help us in, in rating those roads and so forth. So it's a, it's a good deal. It'll take, oh, probably a month or two to, to get it completed, because it won't be, we won't be able to stick with it day after day after day. But it is part of our endeavor to capture and catalog all of the infrastructure items that we have in this county that we don't currently have that kind of data on. So this is one of the first things that we'll do. We'll follow that up in the coming months and years with all of our crossroad tubes, all of our entrances, all of our structures that are less than 20 feet in width or length, those sorts of things. We will eventually have inspection data and documentation for everything that we have. All of our signs, all of that will be available to us in our proposed software system that we're talking about. So that's, that's pretty neat. Also, I've been talking about the groundwater monitoring report that SCS has undertaken out at the landfill. That report was submitted to me on Monday. I, I reviewed that and given them permission to send that on to KDHE. The results of that monitoring well does show that there are some volatile organic materials, geochemicals, and dissolved heavy metals in some of the wells. But they are such low levels of those that we don't anticipate any, any pushback from KDHE. And so the current monitoring that we do is called detection monitoring, where every three, four, or five years, we do, just like we, what we have done here, where they will go out, they'll mon, they'll pull up samples of that, they'll send it off to EPA-approved lab, and they will send those results back, and then it ultimately goes to KDHE for their approval. We don't expect that to change with the results of this, which is really good news. So there's nothing that, at least at this point, that we believe we're gonna have to do extra that, that we're not already doing today. So that's, that is good news, and it'll be, oh, a few years down the road before we have to do this again. Yeah, so that's all I have today.
I got one thing, David. In the Ottawa Herald this Saturday, they, they said that we're gonna take out the bridge on the, across Toy Creek, Casa, Ottawa Creek, the Toy Creek Bridge, northeast of town, out in my area. And I got people kind of excited out there that it's not the one we're gonna replace. It's out on Osborne.
That, the only bridge that, that I'm aware of that we're gonna replace at this time is the Osborne Terrace Bridge. I'll have to, I wasn't aware that there was an article saying that we were doing something else. I'll have to explore that a little bit. Now.
Some of the people are happy about that, and I said, well, it's not that bridge.
Yeah, no, we're, we don't have any plans at, at this point to do anything other than Osborne Terrace.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Janet? Okay, David, or Paul, would you like to say anything this morning?
Morning, Commissioners. Just a couple of things. We have
Morning Commissioners. Just a couple of things. We have a childcare conference over in parallel on Friday. And Don's gonna be there. We'll have probably eight or nine folks from Franklin County attending that conference. It's about a four-county gathering and try to share ideas and, and approaches to solve some of our childcare needs for our workforce. So, I'm looking forward to that. And Janet McRae, the Economic Development Director at Miami County is hosting that. And if you know Janet, she's, she's tremendous. So, really appreciate what she's doing to help us pull this together. And RCND is paying for lunch, so I appreciate that, Don, very much, the support that we get on that regard. So, hopefully I'll come back and share some news with you on that. I just want to follow up on the employee appreciation. You know, I've, I've had the pleasure of watching and sitting and participating in these meetings for a couple of years now. And unfortunately, most of the time when the public comes in, it's to complain or words, something negative. And so somebody who works here is not a county employee and gets to see the day-to-day, but also someone who's out in the county a lot and gets to visit with a lot of people. I want you to know the overwhelming opinion in the county is that they're very pleased with the support and the leadership and the operation of the county government. So, when we have negative comments, it is by far a minority. Unfortunately, and we're not unique, our society, we don't take time to come in and praise people. So, but if people did, there'd be a lot longer line coming up to the mic to say thank you for your leadership, for Derek's leadership, and for the great team that they work with. And I, I appreciate Derek inviting me to the department head meeting yesterday so I could share that directly with the department head. But I also wanted to come up and just publicly share that with you and, and anybody listening, that we just have a great team. We're very fortunate in Franklin County. They're very dedicated people and work extremely hard. And I couldn't be more proud every time I say it's a great day to live in Franklin County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, for those comments.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
I, I meant to say something that we've been talking about vehicles and, and auctions and whatnot. Road and Bridge ordered three vehicles over about a year ago. We've got one of those in. Two of them, we're hoping arrive sometime soon. But once those vehicles get here, we're gonna be ready to move forward with potentially another auction. And I just wanted to give you all a heads up that that will be coming. And I'll reach out to all the department heads at that point whenever we're ready to go and, and try to do this collectively as a group.
Good. Thanks, Derek.
I hadn't had a meeting, but I was glad Paul got up here. He got kind of a hit to go back on this a little. About three or four months ago, I know Derek attended, and we had a meeting of all the economic development directors of six counties in the Lake Region. And, and then we, COVID's been a real thing to get our necks going. And then Paul approached me about helping sponsor this. And unlike everybody else, I thought, you know, what childcare got to do with, you know, economic development? But I've been educated. I mean, you know, and then last night, and if any of you see it on the national news, it was a big topic and they were pinpointing Kansas. And they said, you know, since COVID started, the state has lost 350 licensed daycare centers. That's a lot of daycare centers. And they predicted that 10% of the population that was working, mainly ladies, have had to stay home now with their children because of lack of, take that out of our 10% of our employment, you know, here. You know, think what that, that means, you know. And, but I'm getting convinced, I mean, you know, I'm glad Paul talked, didn't talk me into it because I talked him into it to begin with. So, but I, you know, I agreed to follow his guideline, you know, and what we could do next. And I talked with Janet McRae yesterday. She called me and thanked me for participating and everything. And it sounds like we're gonna have a good turnout. And I think it's something I'd like to see us, we'll think about it, do something similar in Franklin County. I'm hoping that maybe the county can help. You know, over there, it's, it's a chamber and, and economic development, which economic development over there is the county. We're just kind of sharing with our, but over there it is. So, it is a county directly putting into this tomorrow. I mean, we're putting, RCND is putting the bulk of, of the money into this because I got a grant here a while back, a small one, but it's all gonna last terribly long. But I'm hoping I can get something off the ground. I didn't realize how important, and for them, when it really opened it, when they had it on the national news last night, and they use Kansas as an example. I'm hoping I can come back and we can talk about it later, maybe with our CARES Act money or, or the county or something. We can do something similar down the line. We got two of the counties that we didn't get in this one involved. We got four in the sixth. Then maybe we can pull in the other two, do in the other direction for us the next time, you know. So, that's all I got.
Are you up to anything? I am?
Last Thursday, I was on the panel for the Local Governance Day for the Franklin County leadership. It was interesting, after we went through the questions that the, the leadership gave us, then we opened it to questions from the leadership, the people in the leadership class. And we had a very long extended conversation about affordable housing. And what we can do, what they can do, what we need to do because they all know that it's a problem. And it was, we took probably 20, 30 minutes talking about affordable housing. Later that afternoon, I had Advent Health Hospital Board meeting. They're having workforce issues, of course, like everybody else, although they are starting to, to get their numbers back up. They had some interesting news that they are sponsoring the May NASCAR race at Kansas Speedway. So, it'll be Advent Health at that race if you're a NASCAR fan. They are excited because the numbers at, at Advent Health are like back to like last July. And, I mean, we're, last month, they were all really overwhelmed. We're really back down to a reasonable amount of number. So, they're excited about that. If you go to the hospital, they're doing a lot of remodeling. They're remodeling their ambulatory surgery unit and relocating the pharmacy. Even during COVID, they still have been recognized and have gotten a lot of recognition and different awards. One of them being they are in the top 100 rural hospitals in the United States. And so I asked, well, how many are there? And there's about 1,800 rural hospitals in the United States, and Advent Health is in the top 100. So, that feel, I feel like we're in a good, a good place. We're moving in the right direction. On Friday, I attended a Chamber of Coffee for 785 Decore. And if you've never been there, I think it used to be maybe a auto supply store on the 100 block of Poplar. So, it's kind of off of the main drive, but they have some really cool things. And also B Squared Property, which is a property, oh, they flip houses, they buy houses, they do general construction. Anyway, they're also in that building. So, it was kind of a double Chamber of Coffee. And, and it's probably the best attended one for a long time, probably since COVID. So, that was kind of nice to see everybody out, starting to get out again. On Friday afternoon, I did listen into the legislative update. One of the things that is going on right now that's pretty interesting to most of Kansas, especially us lawmakers or politicians, is that there is a lawsuit, dark store theory lawsuit that is being heard by the Kansas Supreme Court that hopefully will give some direction to the praisers on what they can and cannot do. And it's being brought by Johnson County against some big box stores. And if you don't know what the dark story theory is, you might want to get some more information on it. But it's something that is really, could really hugely affect our commercial property values. And if those are affected, then the tax burden goes back to the, to homeowners. So, we really, you know, we feel like you, you should pay the taxes that you should with the value of the property that you have. But anyway, that's going down. And still, there are food sales tax bills still popping up. But at this point, they're at the point where you, you need, your bills need to have been accepted by your house. So, if you're in the House, that goes to the Senate. And if you're in the Senate, it goes to the House. So, there aren't gonna, they're kind of at the turnaround point in their session. And then just a piece of information, this week came down that four U.S. companies have settled $26 billion to settle claims that they fueled the opioid crisis. And that's that lawsuit that we were part of through the state. So, part of that will come back to the county. Part of that will stay at the state for opioid rehab, hopefully to help people that have been in crisis. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. I went to the FCDC meeting via Zoom yesterday morning. And the big news is that Scott Schultz is stepping down as president because of business conflicts. And Roger Maxwell of Kansas State Bank is gonna take Scott's place. We had one guest here yesterday is Ryan Wilkinson. His leadership Franklin County was a guest at the meeting. Paul said there's 73 members now and six new ones. And some of the new ones included Cook, Flatt, and Strobel, one of the people that we do a lot of business with. And also, I just want to mention, old friend George Wingert is an individual member. So, you can have individual membership and be part of FCDC also. Paul mentioned about housing interests, apartments, multifamily housing in Wellsville and Ottawa mainly. Looked a lot of interest there. I gotta congratulate Paul about his goal was $10,000. I don't know if you met that yet. Getting close, helping out the less fortunate that need temporary housing when the weather gets real bad. And making over 7,000 now, I guess it is. It's going through Hope House. And they're providing the services for the people less fortunate than us. And just wanted to mention, I don't know if I left anything out there yesterday, Derek?
Oh, thank you. Did good, Roy.
Okay. Just want to mention, community partners need to get their applications in by March 7th, coming up this week. So, or next week, I guess it is, next week. So, I need to get your applications in there for our community partners and also those receiving guest tax money, so.
Roy, do you, please finish.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you want to, I assume with COVID numbers trending the way that they are, do you want to plan on bringing our community partners in for presentations this year? You'll recall the last two years, we haven't. We've just, I mean, we've held them flat. And certainly, you know, we're gonna have budget challenges, but would you like to let them come in and, and present this year?
I think we haven't seen it for a while. I think it'd be nice, personally, I think it'd be nice if everybody else agrees.
Well, I, I don't think we have public health concerns, I guess, to the same extent this year, so.
We do have a study session planned for the 21st, your Monday study session. So, I would suggest if, if you want to have them in, that we hold that on the 21st. That'll give you guys a couple of weeks to look over, well, probably realistically, a week to look over the documents. So, we'll get those on Monday. I'll try to get those turned around for you guys on Wednesday. If not, give them to you Thursday or Friday at your retreat. So, sometime the end of next week, you'd have those documents. And then that would allow you guys a week to review all those packets from them. That works.
Good, yeah. Okay, lastly, the KCC meeting has been announced for April 26th through 28th in Salinas. So, it's a little ways away to think about the KCC meeting. Don't have anything else? Anybody? Pardon?
Can I add one more thing? I went to, I did go to the Legislative Coffee on Saturday morning, and there weren't very many people there, but it's a great opportunity. You know, the, those people in Topeka are making decisions that affect us, not only us as leaders of Franklin County, but everybody, all the citizens of, so they're here. They, I think they have one more the very first part of April. So, they were all there. If you want to see your local legislators, go to the Legislative Coffee.
Okay, I am. I just want to reiterate that not only me, but I think the rest of the nation really, really appreciate our employees for the county. When I don't hear any comments, basically, that's, that's great news. So, I really appreciate all our employees and recognize that this Friday is Employee Appreciation Day. So, thanks again to employees of Franklin County. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you.